Good evening, we're gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order. We'd like to welcome you to our City of Palatka July 13, 2017 Commission Meeting. We'll have our invocation by Reverend Dan Phillips. Reverend Phillips, would you also lead us in the pledge? Everyone please stand. Father, we are assembled here in this building this evening because there is business to conduct for this city. And Father, these people, these ladies and gentlemen on the dais, have made themselves available to serve their community. And they serve with a heart of love, and they serve with a heart of compassion because they care about this city. And Father, there are volumes and volumes of books that show them laws and title codes and rules and do this and do that, and they must be proficient and they must abide by those rules and those laws. But Father, your word encourages them to have compassion for the residents of this city, to hear the needs that are brought forth, and to serve their people. Father, their hearts want to see this city grow, their minds want to work together to find ways to make this a better place to live and to work. And Father, they want to do it, knowing that you're here observing, that you're watching, and that, Father, they seek guidance from you. So Father, may everything that is done and everything that is said in this place be done, knowing we're in your presence. And so Father, we ask all of this in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Present.
Commissioner Borman?
Present.
Commissioner Campbell?
Present.
Commissioner McCaskill-Williams?
Here.
All members are present and accounted for, and you have a call.
Thank you. Has everyone had an opportunity to look at the minutes from the June 22, 2017 meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. My Commissioner Williams, is there any further discussion?
Question.
All in favor say aye. Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item one of the agenda, which is our public recognitions and presentations. We've got a couple special presentations today. Captain Newcomb and Captain Forsyth, if you guys could come forward with me. If you guys recall, last month, we had an opportunity to recognize the Southeastern Conference of the Seventh Day Adventist Church for their Freedom March. They came into the City Commission and pledged continued support within the community. They had over 1,000 people come into the community and provide a march which created awareness for several different areas, most notably health services. They had over 230 people participate in a free healthcare clinic, providing dental and other healthcare services and screenings over at their campsite on State Road 20. But also, we were intrigued for another surprise. They mentioned to us while here at this commission meeting that they had a truck with some extra food on it from their camp retreat for that week. Well, we thought that was gonna be a small truck and something that we could go take to a local facility. And in fact, we were treated with a day's work from a handful of guys from the Police Department and other folks coming together to actually distribute this food to multiple agencies within the community. And we're doing this recognition, and we're gonna send something over to the Southeastern Conference. But there's a distinguished community service award awarded by the City of Palatka City Commission to the Southeastern Conference Seventh Day Adventist. On behalf of the citizens of the City of Palatka and Putnam County, in recognition for your generous donation of 1,458 pounds of food for distribution to men, women, and children in need, we congratulate you on your mission to promote healthcare advocacy, youth development, benefiting the citizens of Palatka, Putnam County, Florida, proclaimed this 22nd day of June 2017. Tarrell Hill, Mayor Lawson Brown, Rufus Borman, Justin Campbell, Tammy M. Williams, and Terry Suggs, City Manager. And we just wanna recognize them and thank them, although they're not present, their presence is greatly felt within this community. So let's give them a round of applause.
We, as the Police Department, we spent about a half a day unloading a tractor-trailer full of food. And we distributed that food as members of the Police Department to all of our different churches, to the soup kitchen, and all of the other locations that help distribute food to the needy in our community. If you guys get a chance, if you go to our Facebook page, the Police Department's Facebook page, there's pictures of pallets of food, canned goods and things. I just didn't have time to print them all up to bring them in, but it was a tremendous amount of food that they were able to help our community out with.
Thank you, guys. We want to thank you for the work that you guys did and making sure that went off very well. Next up, I'll turn over, we've got a check presentation from Mr. Jim Troiano, St. John's River Water Management District. Mr. Griffin, can you come forward at this time? Along with Ms. Tucker and members of the Commission, can you come down for us? Terry.
Please, John, you wanna start your post?
Yes.
You're gonna give an introduction.
Right.
Well, first of all, thank you to the Water Management District. We've got Mr. Jim Troiano here. He's gonna do a presentation for a grant that myself and Ms. Tucker, mostly Ms. Tucker, wrote. And this grant is focused on constructing a 200-acre spray field at our wastewater treatment facility to assist in the disposal of reclaimed or beneficial reclaimed water, as the district wants to say, as well as construction of a tank, new filtration system at the golf course, as well as some small reclaim line extension, which we also have some individuals here from Tater Farms, which I believe they'll be getting a check too. So with that said, I'll be handing it over to you, sir.
Very much so, thank you. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, again, Jim Troiano from the St. John's River Water Management District. I've been in front of you before discussing our great cooperation that we've had, and tonight I had the distinct honor of representing this district, our governing board, and Dr. Ann Shortell, and bringing the Commission a check tonight in the amount of $1,109,220 for a job that's gonna be well done in the City of Palatka and money well spent for this community and for our water initiatives in Palatka and in Putnam County. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make this presentation to you and your Commission, if I may? And please, if we may have staff, can we have staff come on, please? Because they did a great job making this all come together. Come on, let's all slide in there.
Turn a little bit.
Yeah.
No, not you.
On behalf of the district, I'd like to present this check, although you can't cash it at a local bank, I promise you it is good once you do make a withdrawal on it. So congratulations to the City of Palatka and all your hard work. Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Thank you.
To you.
Thank you.
And I don't mean to get in your way, but you're gonna get your picture.
All right, on three, one, two, three. One more, on three, one, two, three.
Outstanding. And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just keep you up there for one more second. On behalf of the district, again, there was a cooperation between the City of Palatka and private organization, and some things that we're truly trying to look at is the public-private partnerships that are out there. And I'd like to bring up Mr. Eric Court and Carlton Jones, please, with Tater Farms, and just to recognize them for a great project and working well with the city. If you want to mention anything at all about your project, just for a few seconds before I make the check presentation?
Good evening. Yeah, the project's gonna be very similar to what the city's trying to accomplish, and we're gonna take an O'Hare irrigation system and treat it as a spray field to spray over our sod operation. So we appreciate the Water Management District and with the cost of dollars that are gonna help us do that project and the cooperative effort with the city as well, so thank you very much.
Outstanding. So, Mr. Mayor, may we take a picture with you and the Commission, please? Carlton? Eric? John?
You guys slap your little hands.
Yeah, absolutely.
You're all for that check, though.
Do we have one more coming?
Yep.
However you wanna do this. Eric and Carlton? On behalf of the Water Management District, our governing board, and our executive director, congratulations, and I present you this check in the amount of $74,250.
All right, on three, one, two, three. Three, one, two, three.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. Appreciate you. Mr. Mayor? Thank you again.
And again, thank you to Tater Farms. Thank you to the district, along with their board of directors, for seeing it, seeing it fit to actually fund our project and create the wonderful partnership that's been thriving over this last year or so. We definitely thank you again, Mr. Troiano.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Now we'll move on to item two of the agenda, which is our public comment sections. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. No action will be taken on topics of discussion. For those of you who are interested in public comments, you'd like to fill out a speaker card in the back of the room and bring that forward. As you approach the podium, give your name and address for the record, and we'll go from there. Is there anyone here for public comment? Great.
Robert Hare, $118. I just want to, I did invite the electronically, but give you an actual part invitation to the event that we're having on Saturday. We have Dr. Wayne Wood coming down from Jacksonville to do a presentation on the architecture of Henry John Pluto, of which we have stoked two existing structures still in the city, and other Palatka historic landmarks. And he is known in the preservation circles, as well as retired automators. He did his great job, he's authored 13 books, so we'd surely like to have him come and welcome him to our city. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Senior, is there anyone else here for public comment? Seeing no one, we'll move to item three of the agenda, the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda, we've got various items. Item A is Adopt Resolution Number 2017-12-64, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest Air's Associates Engineering Scope and Fee Agreement in the amount not to exceed $75,000 for planning and design specifications, and a scope and fee agreement in the amount of $2,180 for FDP permit modifications for wastewater treatment plant biosolids improvements project. B, Adopt Resolution 2017-12-65, awarding the bid and authorized execution of a contract with Curt's Construction Incorporated in the amount of $1,613,087,80, together with Deductive Change Order Number One in the amount of $903,963,80 for Historic District Potable Water Main Projects per results of ITB Number 2017-11. C, Adopt Resolution 2017-12-66, awarding the bid to Commercial Industrial Corporation, CIC, an execution of a contract in the amount of $935,720,99, together with Deductive Change Order Number One in the amount of $355,720,99 for the South Historic District's Stormwater Improvements Project per results by ITB Number 2017-10. D, Grant Permission to Exceed the Level Noise Levels for Special Events Permit Number 17-34, Labor Day Celebration September 3, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Putnam County Democrats and North Central Florida Central Labor Council, Richard Segal, applicant. E, Grant Permission to Exceed the Level Noise Levels for Special Events Permit, Ninth Annual Veterans Appreciation Bass Tournament on Saturday, September 23, 2016, Chuck Foster, applicant. F, Upon Request to Exceed the Level Noise Levels for Special Events Permit Number 17-38, Civil War Living History Event Occupation of Palatka, September 29, 2017, from 8:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m., and September 30, 2017, from 9:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m., and Brownstone Hill and House, Elizabeth Van Rensburg, applicant. G, Grant Permission to Exceed the Level Noise Levels and Close Certain Streets for Special Events Permit Number 17-39, St. John's River Bartram Frolic Friday, September 29, 2017, from 6:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m., Saturday, September 30, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. until 9:30 p.m., and Sunday, October 1, 2017, from 7:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m., Bartram Trail and Putnam County Committee, Sam Carr, applicant. Are you guys any consent agenda that you wish to have removed? There's a motion on the floor in a second. Is there any readiness?
Questions.
Questions called. All in favor say aye. Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number four of the agenda, is Request to Exceed the Level Noise Levels and Close Catherine Street Between Alvey Street and Williams Street for Special Events Permit Number 17-42. Come Together Day, 2800 Catherine Street, 7:15, 2017, from 3:00 p.m. until 11:00 p.m., Brownstone Entertainment, Sylvester Brown, applicant.
Mr. Crowe?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Dan Brokland, Director. Essentially, this is a request for a concert at what's known as the Big Homie property on Catherine Street. The Special Events Committee did meet to consider this request. Technically, we have not signed up on it because I believe the police team had some concerns, and I can't speak for that, but essentially, they did go through the process and submit the application, and we went to the meeting, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
What were the concerns?
I'd rather...
Actually, before we get into that, Mr. Brown, you wanna come up and give a, you wanna talk a little bit about your project?
Sure.
Just stick your name and address for the record.
My name's Sylvester Brown, address is 7411 Star Road, Jackson Road, Florida. I used to live in Palatka, I don't live there anymore now. But it's not a concert, it's a come-together day. I'm not from, well, I'm from here, but I have been here a while, so I've talked to people from here, and there's a lot that'd be going on in the community. So I'm just trying to do the best that I can, being from here, being, I used to be a resident, to bring the community back together, being away. I come back, I visit, I listen to what people have to say, you know? It seemed like the community had started to break up. So my thing is coming back, trying to bring the community back together the best way that I know how, as an individual and as a person, and as a man, being from Palatka, Florida. So it's not a concert. We're gonna be playing music, I have bounce halls for the kids, have food for the kids, and we're gonna have a stage, we're gonna let people that have, you know, have a little talent, be able to showcase their talent, and that's pretty much it, but it's not a concert, though.
Any questions for the Commission?
So, Mr. Brown, you're saying this is basically a family event, and kids are invited, you're catering to all members of the family, all ages, the kids, to come out and have fun, and at some point, it'll cut off probably the adults over there, because I see it's from 3:00 to 11:00?
Right. But we don't change the time, I mean, if it's okay, we change it. It's gonna be from 3:00 until 10:00.
Okay.
So, you know, the kids, it was telling about the kids have to be in at a certain time, so we wanna make sure if they're still out there to get home in time.
Absolutely.
So we'll cut off at 10:00.
Any other questions for the Commission?
I wanna hear what the...
Okay. Captain Newcomb?
Matt Newcomb, Support Service Captain for the Police Department. Chief Shaw will be presenting this to the Commission tonight, however, he is on vacation. Chief has three concerns for this event. One is the one-way entrance and exit to the venue in which the party is being held at or the event is being held at. The second is the noise variance, and I'll speak to you about that here in a second. And then the third is the allotted time. In the original application, the application stated that it was from, from my understanding, from 3:00 p.m. until midnight. When the special events group came together to discuss it, the request was made to do it from 3:00 to 11:00, which is what's on the contract, or I'm sorry, the application now. Where the location is at, at, over off of, I'm trying to remember that, yeah, it's over by, in the Lemon Heights residential area, there's one way in and one way out of this fenced-in compounded property. The application states 300, but the original application said 300 to 500 people. And with one way in and one way out, the safety concerns are due to the number of vehicles, the road closures are for the vehicles to have parking. With one way in and one way out, if we have an emergency, it's gonna be very difficult for emergency personnel, whether it's fire, police, rescue, to get there in a timely manner to assess whatever situation we may have. The other concern is the noise variance going until 11:00 p.m. Chief Shaw is actually requesting that the venue be changed, not the venue, but the time be changed, instead of 3:00 to 11:00 or 3:00 to 10:00, like Mr. Brown just said, to actually 3:00 to 7:00. Because once the daily noise calms down, of what we're used to hearing every day, and it starts to get quiet at night, the noise just travels. And typically, whenever we have an event, where there is an event at the Big Homies location, which is where this is, we average three to five calls for service, in addition to our normal calls for service just for noise. We get a lot of noise complaints. Now, I know that the noise variance would allow the increase in noise, but we have a lot of retired people that live in that community that just get upset. And then our safety concern is the number of staff that we have onboard. We're already policing with roughly four to six officers on a given Saturday night for our entire community, which is what we do on a daily basis. However, when we have three to 500 people at one venue, you're looking at about 150 people to one officer if we have something major break out. Whenever we have the blue craft, we have anywhere between six and 10 officers out there at a time. So the noise variance is an issue for Chief. The allotted time, again, he's requesting that if the event is approved, that it goes from 3:00 to 7:00 instead of 3:00 to 10:00 or 3:00 to 11:00. And then again, our concern is if someone were hurt, or if there were a fight or anything else to break out on the property, the amount of time it will take emergency service personnel to get into the venue, because it's a fenced-in area, and with the traffic, with the number of vehicles and people that'll be there, it's gonna be difficult to get into the property to deal with whatever problems could happen, if there are any problems.
How many officers are you guys recommending for the street closure?
For the street closures alone, we've recommended three officers. And then you'll have the on-duty shift that's gonna be on duty, doing our normal patrols and stuff for the community, which will be another four to five.
But you can't compare that thing to the craft, because you've got thousands of people there.
Yes, ma'am. I was just using that as an example.
Well, I have some questions, and I think my question stemmed, I think as a person using the facility, some of the concerns can be addressed by Mr. Brown. However, I think some of the issues, especially with the entrance and the exit, that's nothing necessarily that Mr. Brown has control over to make the decision, if that's even an option. So I don't even think, if that's one of the major concerns, I think the owner of the facility that he's renting it from or utilizing it from needs to be here to be able to accurately address that concern. Now, as far as the time, I don't see where Mr. Brown can't address that issue, but in order for us to look at this holistically, I think the owner needs to be here to actually address one of those issues.
Yes, sir.
And that's just my perspective.
I think the time, maybe look at adjusted time, even if they have to move it back an hour and say from 2:00 to 9:00, or look at something, they do some compromising to see about getting them into it. And there is a chain link fence that might be able to be worked with so that they could do a second exit and entrance for you, because if we let other people do it, is there any way for you all to do some of the music that floats away on the inside, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If you could do something with taking care of some of the noise so that the neighbors, because sometimes it is an area that has some older people in it, they wanna sit in and get at TV at night. I think if we let them sit down and look at the things that are wrong, that we might be able to see if they can make some adjustments to make it work. We want stuff in the community, and we wanna do stuff with our kids and stuff.
Yes, ma'am. We're not against the event, so please don't misinterpret us. We're just bringing the concerns that we have at hand.
And just for information purposes, I got a call from Tyrone Williams, who's one of the grant writers and one of the proprietors of Big Homies. He indicated, and I talked to him a little bit about the concern about the fencing, there's a chain link fence. He indicated to me that they have the ability to actually, there's a back fence, I guess, on the property, to actually direct, divert some of the traffic to the dirt road that's adjacent to it, and so on. It may be some of your concerns. And so, and I talked to him a little bit about the fact of the number of people in the area and being able to create the proper ingress and egress for safety concern, and he didn't have, he didn't seem to have any problem with that. So I don't think that would be the concerning issue. I think, you know, if we're, seems to be that you're, we're in the ballpark as far as time is concerned, and it's just a matter, you've got the three officers that are kinda present at that time, we may be there. There may be, I wanna make sure, is there someone from the Fire Department to address any other concerns that may be there?
I don't know if Mr. Smith is here for that or not. I don't know much about it, but like he said, that would be, the entrance and exit would be the biggest deal for us.
Well, I'd like to make a recommendation for you guys to take a look at what you can possibly do as it relates to the ingress egress, and see how it would not impede public safety.
Well, the biggest issue, you got it, the event is Saturday, and there has to be some direction from the Commission if the idea is to push the event forward with the stipulation that certain things be in place, or whatever it may be that you guys want. So I think more so than anything else, I think staff is looking for some direction from the Commission as to how to move forward and have some collaboration between Mr. Brown and staff to try to see if we can get there.
Yeah, because it's next week, right?
This is Saturday. It's 50, 50.
Forty-eight hours from now.
And I think also, because I'm driven by seeing events there, a concern that I would have is the parking inside of the fence, to make it, in case there is an emergency, that the parking is some way of a manner that everyone can foul out, or it's not where you have this car backed up this way, that car. If there's some uniformity to the parking, if there wasn't an emergency to arise, we make sure that, you know, everyone can foul out in a certain manner, but if we can get like that, I don't see where it should be a problem.
We talked about it in the first meeting. We, I'm gonna have at least eight people out there directing traffic and parking people inside the gate and outside the gate. So we have a property across the street from the event that Big Homie owns, we're gonna park people in there, and then on the inside, we're gonna have people in the parking, so like you say, they can't be getting in and out. And it's absolutely, it's two, it's not just one fence, it's two fences, that you can come in on that side and this side, so.
So there's two entrances there?
There's two entrances on Catherine Street. So if, you know, you had to go that way, go to the left or right, you can. But as far as the timing and anything else, we, I gotta work with that.
How's the property zone, Thad? I'm just hoping it's a C2 zoning, which is a potential commercial. So, as I understand it, basically, they're renting the property out or leasing it or something for these sorts of events? Is that allowed by C2 zoning?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Wanna make sure that we're, because if we do this, and then it may be a different group next time that comes in and asks, you know, for the use of the property, so what I'm hearing from you is, is property is all for that?
That is correct.
So if we've got the two methods of ingress and egress, does that... So, if we've got the two methods of ingress and egress, does that meet your concern?
It was, it was our understanding that there was just the one large fence opening in the, in the very front of the business, and that there was not two. Did you see two?
It's hard to tell from the aerial.
Yeah, it's hard to tell from the aerial. But those, those were Chief's concerns. Chief's concerns were the, the one ingress and egress, the time limit for the noise variance, and then just the, the safety prospect of not that we anticipate anything happening, but if a fire were to happen, fire department needs to get in there, if someone's hurt. If, if just anything bad happens, and we need rescue services to get in there. If there's cars parked in the roadway, there's already going to be road closures, which we understand the need for the road closures. But with the road closures, if cars are blocking, we can't get an ambulance in there because of the cars being parked too closely, or whatever the circumstances may be. Just the one way in and one way out is what was explained to us. And we were just very concerned on what level of services we can provide if someone is hurt, or if there's a fire or anything else.
So, we've, so we've looked for 16 to 20 feet for, of open throughway for ingress and egress?
Twelve feet.
Twelve feet?
Yep. As a one-way, one-way and one-way out.
You can guarantee that we'll keep twelve feet of open for ingress and egress?
And then keep a, kind of look at what your noise levels are?
Yes, sir.
I know it's hard. Is it any way to have some of the music inside?
Yes, ma'am. I have a meter that we give, but.
Well, if you, if you do the meter, because biggest complaint we get most of the time is all that loud noise, and that's a, a sad thing, people that are from work, they, some of them want to.
I understand.
And so, you still want it from 3:00 to 10:00?
It can be from 3:00 to 9:00.
Or from 2:00 to 9:00?
From 2:00.
I was just trying to get you.
For me, my question would be, now, if, if that's for the sound, but what about the gathering? So, even if you say that we're cutting the music off at 9:00, are you all still going to be out there, whoever's out there, will they still be out there past the 9 o'clock hour? Or once the music shut down, is the event over?
Well, once, once the music shuts down, we're going to be directing people to get out of there.
Well, Mayor, I'd like to suggest that we have Mr. Brown get with the police department, our staff, whoever needs to, and get those sort of points that you all have worked out. Communication is the best way for us there. And see if we can.
Is, is that a provisional approval? Is it an approval based upon? I would think just for the purposes of what we're doing, we can have an approval with some, with some teeth in it so that we can get that done.
Okay. So, you want to have someone in and register what we need to do?
So, if, if you're, so if you can make your motion, if you can make your motion to include a time for the event, along with making sure that we meet the concerns for safety, meet the concerns of the 12-foot area as well as a method of ingress and egress. I think you'd be fine. So, Al. You want to, you want, you want to make a motion?
Well, I guess I, I'll motion to approve the request to, to see the, the noise level with the event going from 3:00 to 9:00.
And what, what are the answers about this safety issue?
With the, um, so would I add with the ingress and egress of?
A minimum of 12 feet.
A minimum of 12 feet, thank you. I'm sorry.
Does that cover everything that you had?
Second.
Yes, my police.
Okay. And that, that's some understanding what you were coming to.
And, and all efforts make to have two exits, if at all possible.
And all efforts to, to have two exits.
You've heard the motion there, second.
Second. He'll work with the second, the second exit.
Question?
What's your call? What's your call? Ready this? All in favor of that?
That was like, that was like the first meeting.
She's had to gamble earlier today. All right, Brown, very good. I, I want to take this time, before we get into our item number five on the agenda, we've got one person that's out of town, I want to move up an item on the agenda at this point, just to give her an opportunity to get back to Orlando. Item 10 on the agenda, we want to take our, our turns in our public hearing, request for resolution of support and certification of program compliance Palaka Housing Authority and Genesis Community Development Corporation, collaboration on affordable housing program 2017, John Nelson, ED PHA, and Denise Weathers, President of Genesis Community Development Corporation. And item A is a resolution certifying that the Palaka Housing Authority Affordable Housing Project is consistent with the local regulations and the adopted comprehensive plan for the city of Palaka. Nelson. And also, Ms. Weathers.
Good evening.
Evening, good evening.
John Nelson, Palaka Housing Authority, and Co-Organizer Prime, Denise Weathers, Genesis. Some time ago, we began working with the city manager and the city mayor to try to find out how we could help provide housing for the city that was for sale. I want to mention that. Don't think it's public housing.
Okay.
Okay. This is for sale housing. And we came across several parcels that the city owns and which we thought we could develop for sale property. Ms. Weathers is running, running a program in Orlando, and we've been utilizing her services to provide education to residents and citizens of Palaka in terms of home buyers' assistance. So, we would be coming back to you at some later point to request and start the process for having the land itself turned over to the housing authority for development. However, today's request is for, basically, a resolution certifying that the plans that we're putting together would conform to the comprehensive plan that's been required by the state of Florida as part of their community contribution tax credit program. This program would allow the sponsor, which would be the housing authority to run in, with the co-sponsor by Genesis, to go out and seek contributions from corporations or individuals in the way of either materials, services, land, or the avenue. The amount that would be available, if we are able to get approved by the sponsor, would be up to $200,000 per contributor. And those monies would go a long way toward assisting in providing affordable housing. So, again, we are here to request approval of a resolution which we require to have by the state requirements that says that the program would meet, you know, the comprehensive plan, and my understanding is that it would.
Yes, sir. Is there any questions, or any questions, Ms. Weathers?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners and Staff, and thank you for granting me the opportunity to speak early. As Mr. Nelson had indicated, Genesis Community Development Corporation is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit affordable housing organization. My background has been doing affordable housing for ownership for over nine years in the central Florida area. I've also been working with the housing authority since 2015, going through their homeowners, I mean, their residents for homeownership readiness, an educational workshop, preparing them to enter into homeownership. We're at that phase now, I'm requesting a partnership with not just the housing authority, but with the city of Palaka to provide ownership on one or several of pieces of property that the city owns. So, today I stand with Mr. Nelson and the Palaka Housing Authority with the intention of, or with the hopes of doing some affordable housing, not just for seniors, veterans, but also the city has essential city workers that probably need homeownership. So, we're here to offer that as a co-developer with the Palaka Housing Authority for the promotion of homeownership for income-qualified first-time homeowners. So, I thank you for this opportunity. I have an actual concept plan here, if you guys want to take a look at it. It's a follow-up to the information that you have in your current agenda. It is a concept plan for what is referred to as a pocket neighborhood. So, it's only a concept of which at a further time, we can enter to further discussion, more details fleshing out if a partnership will exist between the city as well as the housing authority and with Genesis Community Development Corporation. Having said that, any questions, Wally?
No, just a comment. Over the last couple of years, if you guys remember initially, Ms. Weathers came in with Hope Elliott. Initially, we had significant conversations about creating some affordable housing initiatives and being able to meet our goals of turning renters into homeowners. Also, we've also worked very closely with Mr. Nelson for the last three, the last three years in trying to, to do a very similar thing through federal home loan grants and some other projects that we've had in place in an, in an effort to do, in an effort to do the same, to create the additional housing, and really start to deal with some of the dynamic tax-based issues that we have. I, I think, in looking at this proposal, I want us to note that Mr. Crowe on July 6th had an opportunity to review the proposed plan. He actually sent a letter in confirming that this does in fact comply with our comp plan. The three, the three parcels that were requested as a part of the development project do in fact conform with that. And also, it meets one of our major priorities, one of our four priorities, to deal specifically with affordable housing, and to find opportunities where we can take properties, put them on the tax roll in a different manner by providing homeownership to people who traditionally have not really been exposed to the opportunities. And this, that's what this is all about, is building a better Palaka by building, by rebuilding in people. And that's one of the things that we have to really look at. So, are there any other questions?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment, though. I mean, and like you say, that's one of our major initiatives that we're trying to do on our part. And it's the same thing, Mr. Norman Van Drew's just coming in and saying, hey, we got a lot of properties available, and this partnership, it just falls right in line with, with what we need to do in order to continue to build our tax base. So, we certainly appreciate it, and thank you all.
Thank you, Brown.
Um, I'd like to say, right now, I know that some of our properties, we have had leases on and taken them down so that we had the property clear. I'd like to see us at least recruit the money that has been put in there so we need it, we'll have money to, to take other properties down that have become nuisances in our community. And if we are working towards doing this, that we want to make sure that we get, I, I'll say the right people or nice homes, get folks into the good homes. I'd like to see, and I know we can't, kitchen hold our workers. But we have a lot of young people now coming into the city to work for us. And in town, for, and I think St. Petersburg at one time, they were letting some of their folks, teachers, firefighters, police officers, and the people who work for the city be able to get into homes. We have folks that have worked for the city for long enough to retire, and when they leave, they don't have anything. I don't think anybody should work for the city and not have somewhere to lay their head when they, they get old enough to retire. And so, we'd like to see the plans, I'd like to see the plans for them, how much it's going to cost, and do what's a real layout. I think what you're doing, what you're doing with them in educating them on how to get their credit right, and how to pay those, that mortgage of a month, is exactly what we need to do it. But right now, just handing out faith and lots for me until we can get reimbursement so we can take down other nuisance places is a little bit much. I think we ought to at least get some of that money back so we keep that fund open to take out those nuisance places.
I, I just have a couple of questions, if I could. Mayor?
Sure.
The resolution says that what you're certifying is that the, that the, the city commission certifies that the proposed affordable housing project, a description of which is attached as Exhibit A, is consistent with the local planning and regulations, including the adopted comprehensive plan. But I'm not seeing Exhibit A, so I'm, I'm just, I'm missing that. What, what is Exhibit A intended to be?
It's the letter that.
The letter that outlines the parcel. What, and the only thing they're doing at this time is getting, they're sending, they're getting the background information in place. We're not doing a transfer of property at this particular time. That's something that's going to go through an entirely different process, but we're just making sure that the proposed project has the language in place so that they can apply for the, the federal funding and additional funding to make, in case this project does move forward. What we're doing right now is meeting the preliminary standards necessary for them to continue on their application process. There's no commitment at this point to, to get, to, to do anything with the property other than to say that the proposed project complies with our comp plan.
I want to know how fast, how fast we're going to get them back in tax.
And I would hope that we, I would hope that we quickly get them back. One of the things that I can tell you, the Edmore property, for example, is a park, and that park is not on the tax roll. That park hasn't been a nuisance park within this community. And any idea that would allow us to put homes on a park that's been a nuisance in the community is a great idea. We've got to make sure, if we're going to take properties off the tax roll, then we need to take properties off the tax roll with the vision of putting them back on and putting homeowners inside those properties. So, I, I'm all for us doing something from the standpoint of creating new housing within our community, because one of the issues that we've got is we can't, we don't have housing for working-class people who want something other than a house that's 60 years old. And so, we've got to do something to deal with the issue of having $30,000 median, median home values inside the city and $61,000 median home values inside the county. We've got to do something affirmatively from this commission in the future and have it in our minds that we're going to take the positive steps necessary to increase the home values and to take people from the mode of renting and put them into homeownership and empower them. And if it means that we take a quarter-acre piece of property that was sitting around and has been a nuisance for a, for a house that we had to tear down on it, and we sacrifice a few dollars for the effort of giving somebody an opportunity to change generational, generational lifestyles, then we need to do that. And I, I'll take it on a chin for, for that particular purpose. But what we're doing today is simply dealing with the compliance efforts that they need for what's going on.
And I'm not being critical, I'm just trying to make sure I understand because we are passing a resolution which says that the city plans to make available surplus property to the PHA on which to build up to 10 homes. Now, the three properties that are mentioned on Exhibit A allow up to 19 homes. So, even though they would allow 19, we're saying 10, is that, is that right?
Correct.
May I speak? Just for the record, what Mr. Nelson has before you guys is an application. He has to meet the requirements of a specific product or project in order to meet the compliance of this application. For anyone that he goes out, or I go out and ask for donations, this potential donor has the opportunity to get an even higher tax credit rate versus if they just wrote a check and gave an incoming donation, they can write out so much. But it's a taxable allowance that a corporation that is going to donate to the housing authority or to Genesis, it gives them even that much more of an incentive to give a higher donation. So, this is an application that Mr. Nelson is requesting. The resolution is part of an attachment that must go too. So, to Mrs. Brown's point, today is just for information purposes. We're not asking for any land today. Me being here today is an introduction. So, some of you who don't know me, I've been here since 2015. And those of you who do know me, you know my commitment. And now I'm at the phase in the development process to move forward with Mr. Nelson, move forward with eradicating blight and tearing down some of these homes in this community. Everywhere Genesis has built, we've built up a community, we've eradicated blight, we put taxes on the tax roll, we put first-time homeowners, first-time home buyers and the central city workers into homes, and I know that's what you guys want here in Palaka. I've been driving over here to Orlando since 2015. I have demonstrated a commitment, and I see how, what a beautiful community and the assets that Palaka has, and it's its people.
Thank you. Any further comments for the commission?
I got one more question. How much of the homes that you've built on dollars? What would, if, when you sell them, how, what would they sell for?
That's a good question. Whatever the appraised value would be, and, you know, at some time between now and five years. Right now, the construction costs on those homes is around $130,000 a piece.
And that's an issue, the comps in this neighborhood. There's barely any, if any, new construction. So, anytime we bring something out of the ground, we're going to be mindful of what our cost of construction and what it is to take to sell, because we have to be mindful of the appraisals.
I, I spoke with Mr. Nelson a while back, and looking at what the houses that they just completed, the construction on, and what was there before, it, it certainly improved that neighborhood, the face of the community, so. Again, I'd like to thank you for what you've done in that area. So, again, I'd like to thank you for what you've done in that area.
Any other questions for myself and Mr. Nelson? Thank you very much. Ms. Mayor, I appreciate you for letting us get up here.
Thank you. Any further concerns from the commission? Any comments?
Next time, could we have your information before we come in?
Oh, it's in the back. It's in the back, but I wanted to bring the concept of the Pocket Neighborhood, and my graphic designer had just finished it for me last night. So, again, it's a concept, but you guys have that now.
I have one more question. You said where Morris Street Woods was partially swamped, you know, that area right there, Curran Morris, you know, is it vacant property there?
Yes, there's a drop-off there, and we looked at it and decided that possibly we could build, you know, three homes in that area that would be sitting down in the gully.
And you know what happened, what happened if you sit in the housing swamp?
Yes, for the sake of time, because we've moved there. We're going to be here all night.
Thank you, everyone.
We've got a lot, we've got some pressing issues on the agenda before us. Is there, is there, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, the second. Any unreadiness? All in favor, say aye. Opposed motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving back to the agenda, item number five, presentation and acceptance of fiscal year 2015-16 audit and comprehensive annual financial report. Tina Levinson and John Crowe are ready to be your moderators.
Good evening. Ashley John is not here this evening. He had a previously scheduled family vacation, and he decided to go. He's not here. But I am, and I'm glad to give you the summary of your audit results, and this is for the year ended September 30th, 2016. I'll try to read somewhat brief, just to hit the highlights. So, our auditor's report is on Roman numeral, page 13, 13 through 15, actually, but on 14, at the top, you'll see an opinion paragraph, which says that our opinions, and it's plural, on your 11 opinion units are all fairly stated. We have to actually look at your separate activities, governmental activities, business activities, general fund and feature of funds separately, and give our opinion on those, whether they are fairly stated. So, we believe that they are. If you look at the MDNA section, it's Roman numeral, page 19, there's actually a table there that's probably a good reference for you. If you like to look at comparative from 16, look back to comparative 15, and you'll see in the government-wide summary that your total net position, that bottom line, for governmental is about $680,000 less than the previous year. And for the business-type activities, which is essentially the same as all your enterprise funds together, is about $702,000 lower than the previous year. And the reason, or partly at least, the reason for those is your net pension liabilities, as we talked about last year, we have now that new standard in place. So, each year, you're going to accrue additional net pension liabilities. You also had, part of the reason for the decrease too, is you had a decrease in capital grants from grant doors this past year. As a matter of fact, for the year, you did not meet, you did not expend enough grant money to require a single lot for the federal or the state, which just means you didn't have that additional testing that had to be done this year, only if you spend $750,000 in federal or state. And I think the expectation is that next year, you will. The general fund, which you can see, if you look at page five, actually, the general fund and each of the other funds on that page, the third from the bottom line, you can see that each one increased their fund balance per year. And then go over two more pages to seven, and actually, each of those, page eight, third from the bottom line again, each of your enterprise funds decreased except for the golf course. And the decreases correspond to what I just said about business activities having the net pension liabilities impact them. For the golf course, you don't have that impact because you don't have city employees there to have a liability, pension liability. But good to see they had an increase on the development. Wanted to specifically mention the downtown redevelopment fund, which by the state requirements is required to be audited as a major fund every year. That one carries a cumulative fund balance of about $4,000, and you can see that on page And that's about, an increase of about $217,000 over the previous year. The tax increment funds spent there in the center of the page, you'll see, were about $92,000, and you had about $26,000 in transfers that occurred during the year. Then, as far as your notes to statements, and you'll see, you know, you have quite a few notes, they grow every year because standards pretty much increase every year. But you've had a new standard you had to implement this year called GASB-72 on fair value, and you'll see that in note three on pages 22 to 23. So, point out that on page 23, you have the table there that categorizes each of your investments into what levels they are. Level ones, for instance, are investments that you could go and look up a quoted market price if you were to go and look. And then down from there, you had one investment in US agencies, that one is called level two, simply because there's, may include some things like bonds that you can't specifically pull up a number, an investment number to look that up, but you can find similar amounts. Then, just other notes, and the footnote, you spent about a million and a half for capitalizable assets, and that included airport improvements, two new fire trucks and two new sanitation trucks during the year. You had no new long-term debt, and you've actually paid down about 1.2 billion in debt. On page 47 is your general fund budget. And in the middle of the page there for total expenditure line, you can see you had, you spent well within your budget, you actually had 1.2 million that was projected to be spent, you didn't during the year. Next page is your budget for the downtown redevelopment, and there again, you spent only 92,000, budgeted at 811. So, if you have deteriorating financial condition, and there is a specific definition for that in the statutes, and you do not meet the definition of deteriorating, so that's good news. We did note in here at the last paragraph on page 80, that the aggregate deficit and the unrestricted net position affected by net pension liability is something, you know, you want to try to watch, that you have sufficient coverage throughout the rest of the city's funds to cover that deficit. If for some reason, you know, everything was shut down on one day, which is not the expectation, but you want to try to build up your reserves. And in fact, the city has been building reserves. At the top of 81, page 81, you can see that the operating reserves for the city for 2016 are approximately 97% of the required minimum level, or I would say the recommended minimum level, it's not required. But GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, would like the governments to have at least two months' coverage for the expenditures into the next year, and you're almost there. So, over the years, the trend, you've gone from about 57.6% in 2014 of reserves there to 72.8% in 2015, and now 97.1% in 2016. So, good trend to see. We also have to comment in this letter whether prior findings were repeated from two years ago, there were none from two years ago. There are some findings in here, and those are being addressed in this current year. Those had to do with, we had a couple of adjustments that we came across during the audit that we proposed to be changed, and those were accepted and agreed upon, so those have been made. Also, reconciliations of bank balances, reconciliations are occurring, but there seems to possibly be a problem with the software recording that ties into those reconciliations. So, again, that software is something that's been looked at. And then, the third one this year was for, to make sure consistently you have signatures by employees and supervisors on the time sheets, so that you have good documentation and records for that. We also have to state here whether or not your annual financial report, which is a separate report than this, is filed with the state and is in agreement with this audit, and it is. And then, on page 84 is our required test of compliance regarding investments. We have to look at the four statutes and see if you have met those requirements, and you did. And then, finally, I want to say that you have, as you do every year, you received a separate letter of required communications. A lot of these points that I just brought up are things that are touched on in that letter, and also responsibilities both ways, auditor and city responsibilities. It points out significant estimates and disclosures, and I mentioned the disclosures. In addition, I'll mention pledged revenues is another one I think is significant disclosure that you want to look at. And it discusses adjustments that were made or passed. So, with that, once again, I want to thank you and your staff, particularly management and staff, for their cooperation to help us, you know, make sure we have all the proper information that we can perform our procedures.
Thank you. Any comments? Again, I want to thank you guys for the continued work that you do for the city.
Thank you. Do you usually do approval?
Second.
I don't want to leave before you did.
We're just, we're just mesmerized.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Such great work.
Moving to the agenda, item six, community redevelopment aid to see business resolution increasing the commercial rehab grant award for the Martram Inn 116 Kirland Street to 50% of the adjusted entire project cost or $15,495.
Read it.
Yes, ma'am.
A resolution of the City of Palanca, Florida, increasing the commercial rehabilitation grant award to Linda Kreider from 116 Kirland Street from $8,425 or 50% of the stairway construction cost to $15,495 or 50% of the entire project cost, an increase of $7,070.
Motion to approve.
This is motion on the floor, the second, by Commissioner Campbell. Is there anyone here for public comment? Seem no one here for public hearing on this matter, we'll close it. Is there any unreadiness? Questions called, all in favor, say aye. Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item seven on the agenda, public hearing USDA grant application to purchase an engine pumper fire truck, resolution authorizing application of execution and transmittal of all grant agreement documents, obtain the USDA rule, development grant not to exceed $360,000 for the purchase of an engine pumper fire truck, and to accept grant funds in the amount of $180,000 adopt.
Resolution?
Yes, ma'am.
A resolution of the City of Palanca, Florida, authorizing an application for United States Department of Environmental Community Facilities grant to fund 50% of the purchase cost of an engine slash pumper fire truck, and authorizing execution and submittal of all necessary documents in conjunction therewith, including USDA Form RD 1922-47, loan resolution, public bodies, to accept the grant in an amount not to exceed $180,000 or $360,000 total project cost.
Motion to approve.
Second.
This is motion on the floor, the second, by Commissioner Williams. We're now on the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seem no one but close public hearing. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called, all in favor, say aye. Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item eight, public hearing 4001 Krill Avenue, planning board recommendation to annex the mean future land use map from Puppen County Urban US to commercial, to commercial for property in green zone, this and three other adjacent properties from city C2 intensive commercial and Puppen County C2 general commercial, to PUGC2 plan unit development intensive commercial. Owners are Fat Properties LLC and McComb Homes Incorporated, applicant is Race Track Patrol and Incorporated, item A, annexation ordinance, first reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palanca, Florida, annexing into the corporate limits of the City of Palanca, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as 4001 Krill Avenue, located in Section 11, Township 10 South, Range 26 East, public records of Puppen County, Florida, contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Palanca and providing effective date.
Second. This is motion on the floor, the second. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioner, I'm Tom Sullivan with the Gray Robinson Law Firm, 301 East Pine Street in Orlando, here on behalf of Race Track. Just wanted to say that we appreciate your support, available for any questions you might have. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here for public hearing?
I got a question.
You seem, you got a question for me?
Yeah, I was going to say, I talked to Thad, and Thad said that you all had gone out to the community, and they had meetings and talks in the community, right?
I think that's the next one.
Yes. Through the mail, that's the next time. We did a work extensively with this application, and we did talk to the adjacent properties and the Windex Shopping Centers as well, so we did involve people.
Anyone else here for public hearing? Seem no one but close public hearing. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called, all in favor, say aye. Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item B, resulting ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Palanca, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palanca, Florida, be amended to that certain property located in Section 11, Township 10 South, Range 26 East, including 4001 Krill Avenue, and three adjacent parcels located between South State Road 19 and Florida Avenue, and between Krill Avenue and the Palanca Marketplace Shopping Center be rezoned from Puppen County C2 general commercial and city C2 intensive commercial to PBD slash C2 prime unit development intensive commercial, providing per severability and providing an effective date.
Second.
This is motion on the floor, the second. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seem no one but close public hearing. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called, all in favor, say aye. Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item nine, 26 parcels at Comfort Road and Crystal Cove Road for proposed RV Park, planning board recommendation to amend the future land use map, FLUM, from residential medium RM to recreation REC, to rezone the property from R3 multifamily residential to ROS recreation and open space, Riverwalk LLC applicant. Item A, future land use amendment ordinance, first reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palanca, Florida, providing that the future land use map of the adopted comprehensive plan be amended with respect to the following parcel of lands less than 10 acres inside from RM residential medium density to REC recreation for 26 parcels located north and east of the intersection of Comfort Road and Crystal Cove Road, located in Section 37, Township 9 South, Range 26 East, providing per severability and providing an effective date.
Second. This is motion on the floor, the second. We're now open the floor for public hearing. We're now open the floor for public hearing. We have multiple speaker cards. William Stevens.
About me? Can I waive my time for the paper, please? Actually, anyone?
I'm going to waive everybody's time until after the presentation. This is what we got. If I can go ahead and have, I can have applicants come forward at this time.
Mr. Mayor, Carl Salafrio, I have a presentation I need for the clerk.
Just before we start the presentation, Mr. Crowe, do you want to come up and give us the history of this project?
Planning Board Recommendation. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I'll try to be brief, but I'd prefer a planning director. Property is currently entitled for twenty-four unit single-family subdivision and forty additional multifamily units. The twenty-four unit subdivision is currently planted, the forty units are not planted. The comprehensive plan allows up to one hundred and ten units density, however, that is just a maximum, and the city has decided to limit it this time to the forty plus twenty-four, sixty-four units. When the applicant approached us, the intent was to have an RV park. We immediately determined that it was important to involve the folks that lived around there. We had a neighborhood meeting, good attendance. After that, we proceeded to the planning board, where a number of the residents of the Crystal Cove subdivision had some concerns. The planning board tabled it to the June meeting, at which time they approved it after a long public hearing of five to two. I think some of the applicant, I want to commend the applicant and the neighbors of Crystal Cove for engaging each other throughout the whole process, listening to each other's concerns. Ultimately, I think what we see is kind of a difference of minds in the sense that the planning board's majority felt like this was good for the city and Marina, for economic development, and left, you know. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Flato.
Good evening, I'm Paul Flato, two oh seven Crystal Cove Drive. The concern I'm bringing to you guys tonight is an issue of flooding. I'd really like to see the use of this property to make sure that it's not going to flood my property even more. So far this month, I spent about a thousand dollars just on little submersible pumps in my yard, and I have hoses pumping out to the gutter to get it out of my yard. I can't even hardly mow. I have to plan my mowing around all the excessive rain. It's very, very swampy back there. That property there is very swampy, and if we don't have a way to move the water off of that property, and we have all these pavers there, I'm really concerned about it flooding my property a little bit more. There's going to be a lot of concerns tonight. The other one I wanted to bring up is that on the north end of the property, it says there's a fence. I live right on the other side of that fence. He said that there was going to be a fence along the east side. I didn't see that in the original plans that we were presented last time. I would like to make sure that that will be something that would also be included. But like I said, my main concern today, and not duplicating what they're going to be saying, is flooding. We have a terrible issue of flooding. Water is just flowing everywhere, and it's going to the back of the neighborhood. I mean, I constantly have water and algae and all this stuff coming out of my yard. The gutters need to be swept out. The drainage back there has been rebuilt a couple of times. Whenever you get a certain, you know, a little bit of rain, everything's just, is flooded back there. My neighbor has a big pond in her backyard right now. There's certain areas I can't even walk in my yard without, like, rubber boots on, so that would be my main concern for today. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Mrs. Hines.
My name is Edward Hines. I'm a resident of Crystal Cove. I strongly recommend that you disapprove of the proposal to rezonate the area. My reason for rezoning the area, I came down from Oklahoma, investigated it, it said residential. And now, twenty years later, they're going to change it. It's going to depreciate the property value of what I invested in. I think my investments is worth more than a decision for some other businessmen to come in and decide that they want to invest in something else because the project of building homes is not working out for them. So I strongly recommend that you disapprove it. My next reason is, this is the, Crystal Cove is the best area in Palatka to live in. You can go through that area any day of the week, and you'll see that that area is manicured, the lawns are manicured. There's no place in this city where you can go and live with the residence that it is. My business plans, when I investigated this, it said residential. I bought here, I invested here because it said residential. Now someone wants to change it because they want to make money. Well, I don't want to make money on me. So I recommend that you disapprove it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Taylor.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bob Taylor, two forty-one Crystal Cove Drive, Palatka, Florida. I've lived in Palatka since nineteen seventy-four, and I'm an architect and an active member in the community. The initial meeting with the Crystal Cove Neighborhood on twenty-three February twenty-seventeen included a preliminary site plan which did not include essential information as cited in the city's Land Development Code and Ordinance for Plan Unit Developments. There have been two planning board meetings where the applicant revised and resubmitted, and now has a current site plan. Please reference my notes. The PUD application and the planning board's process and actions have been laden with inaccuracies, incompleteness, and misrepresentation. The application listed only one property ID number, but several properties are being submitted for amendment that is now corrected by this current submission. The planning director in preparation for the initial staff report included photographs of a remote RV park which showed pavers for streetscapes, drivings, aprons, and landscaping not prepared by the applicant, which may not reflect what the applicant actually intends to do. The applicant's rules and regulations in your packet state that there would be no parking on the grass or in the adjacent public streets. This map is in your packet. See this big white space right here? If you could read that, it would say parking. At the sixth June meeting, Mr. Salafrio said the park would have a gated entry with code access. At that same meeting, Mr. Baughman stated that the wall should have gone all the way down Crystal Cove Road along the east property line parallel to the parcel. Mr. Salafrio says, as far as the wall extending, he has no problem with that. The gates in the wall do not show on the current site plan or the exhibits. The applicant proposed pavers for aprons and drives on previous site plans that are no longer shown on the plans or the exhibits. In the commission meeting agenda packet, Mr. Crowe noted, "Planning Board members expressed the opinion that the motel and Marina came first. First-time resident and initial investor developer of the project, Mr. Charlie Myers, informed that they were planned and developed simultaneously. The streets and roads went in as the hotel and the Marina were being constructed. The residential parcels were sold separately, so development of the residential parcels obviously came later." Proposed zoning ordinance for rezoning sites, exhibits four, landscape plan, and five, drainage plan, they're not on the website. Are they in your packet? The planning director reported the site was grandfathered in and no water retention area would be required. Information was later proven that this statement to be incorrect. The current site plan shows no water retention area. It doesn't also show a dumping station, a dumpster location, sidewalks, landscaping, lighting, off-street parking, parking, and loading. Who will enforce the rules? On-site twenty-four-hour management, golf carts on the site, and a fixed fifteen-day maximum stay. The case before this one proposed an amendment to the future land use map to a commercial site, and the drawings provided by the applicant included detailed site plans with dimensions, water retention area, sidewalks, landscaping, plan schedule, even a colored rendering. The city and its citizens deserve this kind of presentation and insight before having to decide. We still don't have an accurate site plan. The planning board's recommendation is a procedural step in the rezoning process. In this case, their action is not final, nor is it binding upon the city. It is a recommendation. The city commission makes the final decision. I urge you, ladies and gentlemen, to reject the planning board's recommendation for the future land use amendment and vote no on the recommendation to rezonate the property. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn Tingle.
Good evening. My name is Caroline Tingle, and I reside at two thirty-two Crystal Cove Drive. I am a resident of the Crystal Cove Neighborhood, and also a current member of the planning board. As you would expect, I recuse myself from all discussion, participation, and deliberation. I have several thoughts to share with you this evening. During the June sixth planning committee meeting, three board members spoke about their experiences as RV owners and let the residents of Crystal Cove know that they thought we were looking down at RV owners. We are merely presenting the case of incompatibility with this rezoning request, and based on their responses, I questioned whether their vote was influenced by bias. Furthermore, after the public comment was closed, there was a back and forth between the developer and the planning committee agreeing to changes to the PUD. Is that proper? For a modified PUD to leave the committee without reopening public comment? PUD should be very restrictive. It is not at this point. It is only making suggestions in many instances and provides flexibility for minor deviations to be approved by the city staff. Minor is not defined and is relative to this audience. There are many unknowns that create a gray area. If it isn't defined, the gray area will be abused and will be far from upscale. People are continuing to refer to this project as upscale. Even the planning board refers to this as upscale. As I think about upscale within this proposal, I'm concerned. Leaving a handful of trees and widening spaces does not provide an upscale atmosphere and would be a gracious way to say, it's not cramped. In fact, the word upscale throughout the proposal, there's no evidence of what the definition of upscale means. Is it swank, classy, posh, exclusive? Does this site plan exhibit so? No. The site plan exhibits indicate asphalt, yet conversation in planning meetings was shellrock or gravel. Anything less but a dirt road with a different name is unacceptable and not upscale. I don't see this as any small change approvable by city staff. No pavement and impervious surfaces were identified in the application except pavers at the apron to the drives, a six-foot wide strip. Again, exhibit three in your packet shows asphalt throughout, yet there's no indication of a stormwater pond. The background material cites that asphalt and brick pavers help maintain a more upscale appearance. It refers to strike walking lanes, separate paved sidewalks, or stabilized trail. There are not going to be any sidewalks. It could be a dirt path if not defined. So no pavers, no asphalt, no concrete, no sidewalks. A wide-open definition of an appropriate pool type facility, a landscaping plan that takes a decade to mature are far from upscale. I ask you, what elements of this proposal are in fact upscale? Additionally, during the planning meeting, there were statements that there would be no permanent structures, window units, no carports, porches, screenrooms allowed. Some of these made it into the suggested prohibitions chart, such as window units and tarp. Further restrictions need to be defined and solidly included in the PUD. In my preliminary view, Florida Statute five thirteen oh one refers to mobile home parks and RV parks. I am concerned by definition and possible loophole that maximum duration could be defined by people and not the RV, so it is not just occupied fifteen days and stored in place in the owner's absence at a different rate. Additionally, the PUD should not allow for ownership to lease or rent permanently stored all these, shall not become a lodging park for rent as defined by Florida Statute five oh nine. Is the applicant aware, Florida Statute five thirteen one twelve requires the guest register to be retained for two years and shall be made available to a member of the public at request? Even if all the modifications were made to the PUD, we have no reason to believe it will be honored, and unfortunately, there is acknowledged widespread lack of concern in enforcement. I respectfully ask you to take my comments into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Taylor.
My name is Dr. Diane Taylor, and I'm a professor at Taylor Leadership Institute at the University of North Florida. I live at two four one Crystal Cove Drive in a home we built twenty-one years ago. Crystal Cove Drive subdivision is own residential, which by the city's future land use plan protects and encourages the construction of additional homes in our Palatka. Our Chamber of Commerce website promotes Palatka as Putnam County, our location, our people, our climate. These things and more make this the right place to locate your family. When real estate agents show prospective new residents our Palatka with pride, they show them the historic district, the riverfront and downtown, which we have designated, we're doing right now, designating as a national historic landmark, and then they drive through Crystal Cove Drive subdivision where there are neighbors who know each other, homeowners who take pride in their yards and town, and they send their children to our local schools. And they pay forward to the people of Palatka in their time and treasure. Last month, Crystal Cove neighbors from Palatka, Palatka Rotary, Sunrise Palatka, and the Pilot Globe were here in this room with a present of thirty thousand dollars for the riverfront park. Neighbors Dr. Gilbert Evans and Caroline Tingle from the College and I presented Girls' Can in March, and that was a career event for all tenth-grade girls, and I invited Palatka native Barbara Brown from NASA to come and be my guest and speak. And now, Dr. Evans, Ms. Tingle, and I are presenting Boys' Can Two, a career event in November. And our goal is for all Putnam children to graduate from high school, get their education and training, and come back to Palatka to live. Recently, my husband and I attended the National Conference of Architects and Builders, where former First Lady Michelle Obama was the keynote speaker. Mrs. Obama was the former commissioner of planning and development in Chicago. In her closing statement, she urged architects, builders, and contractors to help cities and care about the community they serve. "Think about the next project you take," she said. Yes, there are those big projects, that important building, commercial center, but there's also those parks and homes and opportunities that you have to make a beautiful neighborhood for families and children. I urge you to listen to our unanimous opposition to rezoning. I am ashamed of the bias and disservice of the planning board. Do not sell Palatka cheap. We're a beautiful city, and RV camp is not compatible to an emerging Palatka. Do not take away our potential to add new residents and taxpayers and families to our city. Please vote no to rezoning and retain the vision that you, our city leaders, created and existing with the future plan use. As Palatka Commissioner Mary Wilson Round said, after a vote to hire a local CPA firm for a city contract, "I'm happy we're keeping business in Palatka because we have so many things taken away from us. We need to take care of our own and patronize the people who live in our city and love it." Thank you.
Chevy Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to address you. I'd like to, if I could, sir, if you would pass those down. I'm Chevy Davis. I live at two two six Crystal Cove Drive. I've been a resident of Palatka for sixteen years. I'm retired from the military. We're twenty-eight years of service. I would ask that you would disapprove the proposal to rezonate eleven acres at the west side of the Crystal Cove Marina and the motel there. I'd like to summarize the second paragraph of this letter. It states, "The Crystal Cove subdivision generates substantial amount of income for the city and the county from real property taxes while providing upscale housing that is relatively homogeneous in the project. The appraisal acknowledges that at the present, two commercial projects on the road in Crystal Cove subdivision would be a deterrent for future buyers. Studies have shown that the RV park has created potential to reduce the price, and the buyers are willing to pay for residential real estate projects. Assessed value is based upon historical... the city and the county from real property taxes while providing upscale housing that is relatively homogeneous in the project. The appraisal acknowledges that at the present, two commercial projects on the road in the Crystal Cove subdivision would be a determinant for future buyers. Studies have shown that the RV park has created potential to reduce the price and the buyers are willing to pay for residential real estate projects. The assessed value is based upon historical sale prices, and therefore, the potential is there for values and tax revenues to decrease if an RV park is introduced into this area. The exterior extremities of proposed RV park, quality and management can be controlled, but not guaranteed." This is the conclusion of the report issued by Mr. Dan Moody, a state-certified residential real estate appraiser. Thank you for the attention.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Redford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Kelly Redford, 121 Crystal Cove Drive. And I apologize that I didn't run a speech, but we're gonna get up and talk, I guess, but I didn't want to be, because I don't want to be at odds with the neighbors. But I just want to let you guys know that I do feel that this RV park would be compatible for what we're doing in the marina in that area. Right now, there's very few spots on the river that you can gain access to the water from an RV spot. And I think it would be very compatible for us in the marina. And I think there's a big demand. We approximately get 25,000 to 30,000 people through the hotel and marina per year. And over this period of five years, I've had a lot of people come in and ask for RV sites. I think there's a big demand in this area for that. And I think it would be a benefit to our community, not only bringing tax dollars to our, to our community, but showcasing what we have. I feel that the most, biggest asset that Palatka and Putnam County has is St. John's River. And, and, and that's what we're trying to do is showcase it. So I just want to let you know I am in favor of it and I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Leary.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Rick Leary, 206 Crystal Cove Drive. My wife and I own the property immediately adjacent to the property in question. We've lived there for 16 years. There's a certain serenity and tranquility that exists at the Crystal Cove community that leads us to enjoy a high quality of life. We don't believe that the proposed development is compatible with that high quality of life that we currently enjoy. We think that, that the RV park would be, have a negative impact on that quality of life. We think that the highest and best use of that property would be single-family residential development. For those reasons and the reasons stated by my neighbors, we're opposed to the rezoning. Thank you.
Anyone else here from public hearing? Seeing no one, we're closed public hearing. Discussion for the commission.
May I ask a question? If there's a PUD there, do we have any way of enforcing what we would?
The, through the mayor, Vice Mayor Brown, the enforcement is through our code enforcement department essentially. The city wouldn't receive a complaint and they would consult with us, look at the PUD, determine the violations, and institute the normal code enforcement procedures. We usually, for PUTS, we get pretty good compliance because upfront, the owner has agreed to these conditions, but that's how the process works.
Any other comments?
Can I ask a question of the planning director?
Sure.
Thad, can you explain what, assuming or if the commission approved the Planning Commission recommendation, what development review remains to be done in this case?
That's a good question. I'm glad you asked it, Mr. Holmes. Essentially, the PUD is a concept plan. So what you're getting is not a precise engineered set of plans. The next step would be formal site plan review, which requires an application and a specific plan set, including a very detailed landscape plan, site plan, drainage plan, elevations of buildings, lighting plan, photometric plan. So we require a great deal of specificity. They also have to go through Water Management District Review, which requires that stormwater stay on site for a certain level of rainfall. And the city would basically, we would make sure that it meets our standards as well. So there's lots more to do after this.
Is the development review process open to the public?
It is not.
So it would be up to staff to attempt to implement the conceptual provisions of the PUD that have been approved?
That is correct.
There, you might have asked a couple of questions. There have been a couple references to things such as pavers. As the PUD stands right now, does it require the use of pavers in the RV sites to the extent that in development review, staff would require pavers at the RV sites?
To clarify, we're really talking about the, the use of paper blocks. And I think this came from the Renegades Project, where all driveways and RV sites are paper blocks essentially, kind of a high-quality brick look. What came out of the Planning Board was the aprons of the driveways coming into the park, the actual driveway aprons are paper block. And they were the paper block area on each RV site. What I'm hearing from the applicant tonight is that on each RV site, there would be paper blocks for the RVs. If I'm saying that wrong, correct me, but I believe I heard that however the driveway, the internal driveway system would just be paved, asphalt or concrete would not be paper block.
But I'm interested in knowing what the development review committee would enforce by way of a plan. So, and I know this thing has been, there's been a lot, there's been a lot of conversation. But my question is, what would be in a final plan on some of the topics that have been raised? And the first one was pavers. And if I hear you correctly, as of right now, as of right now, you're understanding that the only thing that would be enforced regarding pavers would be, there would be pavers on the driveway aprons?
That's correct.
And what do you mean by driveway apron?
If you see the, it's kind of hard to see on this, but for example, where the driveway comes in from Comfort Road and Crystal Cove Road, that area, essentially the right of way, is the driveway apron.
Okay. And then you said that in addition, you understood that there would be some driveway pavers on each RV site?
That was approved with the Planning Board. There's, there's a small area.
What do you mean by some?
There was a small, I think it was like a picnic area of, of paper blocks. What I'm hearing the applicant say tonight is that he's willing to have paper blocks for the entire RV site on each space.
I, I know, but I, I heard what he said. I'm not trying to criticize anybody, just trying to let, help the commission understand what is in the plan right now, the PUD plan right now that he would enforce through the development review process. And right now, unless there was a change, what is in the plan is just the aprons coming in off of the road. And then a picnic area size area on each RV site would be pavers. The rest, as you know, would be paved.
That's correct.
Now, he said tonight that it would all be, there'd be no gravel, but is that in the PUD plan that was approved by the planning commission?
That we can enforce because the zoning code prohibits the use of loose materials. You must have pavement for driveways, parking areas. That we can enforce.
So there would not be gravel?
That's correct.
Based upon the authority given to the commission today, do we have the ability to require more specificity or in the design review process to take place prior to approval of both of these items?
Require more specificity?
Or at least at the design review process.
Well.
Good job.
Let me answer the question. There's been some, some reference to certain aspects of the, of the application not being complete. That was, that was mentioned. And, and, and I also heard that maybe they weren't complete when the application was initially submitted, but then there was some supplementation done. And, and my question is, right now, what's in front of the, the commission? Is it a complete application in your estimation under the PUD, our PUD ordinance?
Yes, because our ordinance requires a concept plan. It's actually even beyond what a concept plan could be. There's more specificity. What we have is the concept plan, and when you combine that with what's in the zoning code, that's where you get the specificity because the next step is site plan review. And that's when we look at the entire code and we see what other provisions have to be in play.
So the mayor's question was, we have a concept in front of the board, but you acknowledge that in the development review process, you would add specificity to that concept, correct?
Correct.
So from the perspective of adding that specificity in advance of approval rather than after the fact, is there a vehicle for us to get there?
There is a vehicle for specific elements. One thing I heard was a wall on the east side, which is currently not part of the proposal. Another thing I've heard is the desire to have more than just, maybe just all the driveways be paper, paper brick. You could add as many specific elements as you wanted.
Well, I, I don't know that the mayor is suggesting adding incorrectly or wrong. I think what he's saying is, he doesn't know that he's got a clear enough picture of what's actually being planned. Am I wrong?
Right, right. My, my concern is that what I'm hearing and what I'm seeing are two different things. And I would rather be able to see what I'm hearing in order to be able to make a decision. I, I think out of all the comments that I heard, Mr. Taylor's concerns, particularly those that deal with more the specificity of the calculations, and also some of the flooding issues that I've heard throughout the day give me great concern as it relates to approval of project and basically turn it over at a certain point. I also have concern, why, why is our, why is our development review closed to the public?
It is a staff-level operation essentially. It's not closed. I mean, it's public record. Everything we do is public record and everyone can ask us what we're doing.
So we do have the ability to do the development review in a public forum?
Absolutely. And if you want, the commission could ask for more specificity in terms of a drainage plan before you go to second reading. You could ask for more specific plans for the landscape plan, which is very conceptual now. I mean, the applicant has to obviously invest more resources and time and money and all that, but that's.
I was gonna say the buffer too. Because why I keep saying, talking about that buffer. We had Renick City go in, out there where they went, and they promised to put a good buffer between the people, residents and stuff out there, and they didn't do it. And they kept coming back to us. And I want to be true that if we go forward or whatever we do, that, that's written in stone, that they know that it has to be done because people got to be taken care of if you're gonna do stuff. And some, a few of the other things like drainage. But y'all know when y'all live on the river, that swamp. You know, when you move into places out there on that river, that, that is swamp.
I have some of the same concerns that the mayor has, as well as Vice Mayor. It's like we've seen this before, we've heard this before, and we're putting ourselves back in the same position to experience some of the same problems that we've had previously with other things that have come into Palatka, some just across the street. But I think that I, I would like to see a little bit more of a proposed plan because right now, I'm seeing, what I'm seeing, I'm not so much pleased with. And again, I don't want it to get to the point of, especially now that the mayor addressed this, the issue of the closed-door meeting, I would like to see that open because if there are things that we or the, the citizens that live within that community would like to address or that they brought forward that they don't necessarily see. Because I, I will be honest, I've been to, I mean, I've been to RV parks that are very much upscale. So you have the ability to get them very much there. So I don't want to completely, my perspective is not completely turn it down, but let's get it as upscale as possible to make sure that we keep the integrity of the community that's there, there.
May I speak? I think that Thad, I was letting Thad explain, and if I could, I think I can explain the reason our code is drafted as it is. The, and Thad, jump in if you'd like. But my understanding is that before a potential developer went to the expense of some of the fine, of perfecting and, and, and I guess specifying some of the fine details in a project, the developers wanted some, I guess, confidence that they weren't spending that money for nothing. So our code, and, and quite frankly, that of, of most other jurisdictions I'm familiar with, provides for a conceptual approval process like, like we have right now with the, the, the fine details to be then implemented at a development review stage. I don't know that we can require the applicant under our code to do more, but the applicant can, can do more if he chose to. So I guess what I'm saying is that I think what you can do is remand it to the planning commission to see if the applicant is interested in, I guess, committing to more detail. If the applicant's not, then it comes back like it is and I guess you, you go from there. If the applicant is, then it is true he's taking some risk on in terms of the fact that it may not be approved. But on the other hand, from what's being said tonight, you may see that as being better than what would happen if it comes back as it is at this point. Now, Thad, jump in there and tell me what you think.
You certainly have the ability to remand it back to the planning board if you feel that it's coming to you too vague or not really, you're not very comfortable with what you see. We can essentially go back to the planning board and say, I think what the people are looking for is, is more comfort than it intended, that it's going to be, that they have a feel for what they're gonna see in terms of what are the buffers gonna look like, what are the walls gonna look like, where is the drainage gonna go? Some preliminary engineering calculations that show how the stormwater is gonna work. I mean, you have the ability to require that. And I think Mr. Holmes is right. It should go back to the planning board because that's your local planning agency. Those are the ones, because if it changes substantially, then it's a different project essentially.
Again, I'm really on the side of the residents and their concern. They made significant investments in the Crystal Cove area. And again, the bringing RV project to, possibility of making their property values not where they need to be in terms of increasing the value. Very generally, when you bring something in, it would increase value. So that being a question, and with all the, the law of details missing as it relates to the project plan, the specifications, it just raises a red flag. So again, if we maybe remand it, push it back to the planning zone and then come back down.
Any other comments?
I, I'll say this. When this project came about, my sentiments probably initially in the initial conversations I had with the owner was, I, I thought the neighborhood was probably, I thought that particular parcel would have been more apt for single-family residential or some form of residential. I will say, in having a conversation with him and educating myself on the Renegade Project, I had, I took an opportunity to go out to Renegades and actually look at it. I was rather ignorant related to RV parks in particular. Renegades is far different than any other RV park that I've ever seen. I actually went out and took some photos of Renegades. For those who haven't had an opportunity to go out there.
I've, I've been out there.
And so. And it probably won't work because I took them.
So I, I guess one of my questions is, are you proposing that your RV sites be of a similarity to the, the?
So, I, I guess one of my questions is, are you proposing that your RV sites be of a similarity to the, the those that are there? Can I come back up?
Sure.
I've got a couple of questions while you're here. And I want to give you an opportunity to maybe make some comments as well.
I'd like to point out first that number nine, the two items that came up that we just discussed. One was about the pavers. The other one is about the wall. So, if you look at the number nine in your packet, it says six-foot-high wall similar to appearance of existing mall between the motel and Crystal Cove suburb. It would be erected between Crystal Cove Road and the northwestern corner of the property. So, what I agreed to with the neighbors last time, we would wrap that wall around and come down on that, on that one side. And I'm still agreeing to that. I don't have a problem with, with not, with doing that. So... And the gentleman that raised that issue is not even here tonight. He just wanted the wall to come on down. So, that one, and then the other one, it clearly says, here are the pavers for RV sites and driveway areas. That's number 11. So, I'm committed to that as well. I don't have, I mean, I don't have a particular problem giving you more specificity. That's not, I mean, I'm not here to... But this is the process that you have memorialized in your ordinance and that is why we follow what we follow.
And so, just to address some of my concerns, I, I think that, I think the overall view from everyone, and I definitely, I believe that you'll be a good neighbor and I think you've taken some steps in, in making some modifications to what you brought forward. But I, I think the overall concern with everyone is that we are truly, there would truly be an upscale RV park if in fact that's there. If it's something to them, for me, if it's something to the magnitude of what Renegades is, I don't think you would have, and there would, and conceptually, we were at a point where that was in place. The concerns of flooding and all those things were addressed in some, you know, in some form. I, I don't think this room would be as full as it is right now. I think that in order to, for, in order for me as individually, as one vote, to approve this particular project, the more specificity is needed from my, from my standpoint. You have educated me as it relates to RV parks from the standpoint of causing me to gather additional information and actually going out and visiting other sites and doing some research as to how it works. I, I don't know how it would affect values. I, I don't think that we have enough information on this particular project and all the details. And if you look at the letter, it kind of alludes to that as to how this is going to affect the property values in there. If this is done in the manner that is suggested as an upscale park with the detail, and I think if everyone nods their eyes and crosses their t's, then it, it could be, it could be a davenant rough, for lack of any other term. But I do think that certain things need to be in place to ensure that the pocket of residential that's there might be further affected. And I think you guys are, are willing to make those steps. We indicated that. But I don't wanna, I don't wanna make that decision without having more detail. I can't necessarily require you to give that detail, but we can, you know, and in fact, we're mandating this back to the planning board, asking for additional detail. And I, I think what that does is it, it allows you to be able to move forward. And it's one or two things we can do. You can, we can either request that additional detail by approving for a second reading and going forward. I, I would suggest that we actually remand and get the additional detail from the planning board moving forward so that, you know, those concerns are addressed and that we limit delay as to how we go forward so that...
So, what you're, what you're asking is a detailed drainage plan or a, or a more detailed drainage plan?
For me, I'm just making one suggestion.
Okay, and I'm, and I don't, I'm not saying I'm not good with that, but going back to the plan board means that I've got, you know, delays. And so, I have to obviously work through that. What I'd rather do is say, hey, I'd bring you a, a top-notch plan at the next meeting and you could not vote on it tonight and just table it and say, hey, bring it back in front of us.
And that's what I was gonna ask, because if you give it back to the planning board, it'll be another one.
I got all kinds of time.
And if he's willing to get what we are asking him to do when he really doesn't have to do it, again, I think he's being a good, a good neighbor. And if he can bring it back to the, I would like to have it prior to, if he's willing to do it next meeting, we have something in our hands that we can actually review prior to, so we're not getting it here. So, we can kind of wrap our minds up around, even if we have to take trips out there ourselves and look at those particular things or talk to some of the citizens within that community. I would like to have that information readily available prior to coming in the meeting and getting a formal, you know, slide or however you're gonna do it.
Yeah, I, I...
And that's if you're willing to do so.
I'm willing to do that. I, we can, we can, I think we can provide that before the next meeting and have it in your hands, not an hour before the meeting or give you plenty of time to look at it. And then when I show up next time, we'll have it on the board and you'll have all the detail you need.
So, would you be willing voluntarily to provide the detail that you would probably get from a developmental review by that, by that next conceptual meeting, by that next, by the next meeting?
What's the next meeting?
July 23rd.
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh. So, what's that, two weeks?
Two weeks.
Not a, not a full set of development drawings. Now, I, that, you know, if that's what you're asking for, I don't think we can do that. And no one could. But we could do a more detailed drainage plan, I believe, and we could do a landscape plan.
With some calculations.
With some calculations, absolutely. I think Sturrock could do that. But I mean, a full set of construction drawings.
I, I, yeah, I understand.
I mean, a lot, I think a lot of what you're asking for is already here. It's just, it's just not shown on there yet because we haven't got to that point.
Well, I think the difference is the approval, the approval by the planning board is, has far less teeth than some of the things that have been mentioned today. And I think that's where my concerns are. I, I think if the plan, if, if there was more detail in the approval, then it provides a, a different basis of a guideline. And so, they didn't address issues of flooding and all those different things. They, and I think that's critical because we know it's wet out there. And I think there are just, there's some other factors that probably need to be addressed and I think it would provide comfort to everybody in this room.
Okay.
And so, but that's just, that's just my suggestion. It's gonna have to be, it's gonna have to take place through a motion.
We, we don't have a second reading. If we do it, the second reading is what we eat in the first meeting in September because we don't have an August meeting.
Okay. Well, you technically could approve today and disapprove on the second reading. If that's what you, if, or approve, you can do, you can approve the first reading and then come back on the second reading with additional information. But it's really up to you guys.
I mean, I'd be willing to give you the information way ahead of the meeting in order to help you make a decision. I just don't want to have to go back to the plan board again and spend another two months on that process.
I mean, at the end of the day, I, I don't necessarily disagree with you as far as, I, I think that at this point, this is, this is what we elected for, to make these decisions. And we just need to make sure we're comfortable with the decision that we're making.
So, my question still would be, are we tabling it or do we approve what we have before us with hopes of having that information prior to the second reading or...
Because we do have the option if we approve the first reading to go ahead and move forward and get this information, to disapprove the second reading. Is that what you're saying, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
We're proven to get more information.
I just wanna make, I just wanna make sure we, I don't wanna wind loops. I don't wanna have to do all of that kind of stuff. I really wanna get to the crooks and the crevices of a lot of the concern. But then again, I don't wanna approve something with the condition of thinking that we're gonna prove it all the way through and we don't, and we completely stop it at the second. So, I would prefer that we completely table this thing so that we can get that information. So, we're not giving false hope to this gentleman that we're gonna approve something and then second reading, we completely say no.
So, can I go ahead and make a motion?
I will make the motion since I brought it up.
Okay.
I will make the motion that we table this item until we get the additional information. We, do we wanna do a date certing? That'll avoid you having to re-advertise. If you don't put, if you don't do a date certing, you're gonna have to re-advertise. So, for want of clarification, do we want to do the first meeting in September so that will give him ample enough time to get as much possible? That's what, that would be my motion, that we give you a listen to our September, our first September meeting, which is September...
It's, uh, this is a meeting, twenty-eighth, so the first meeting would be the fourteenth.
Of September.
The fourteenth, yeah.
The fourteenth of September.
A second.
It's most likely Florida second. Is there any discussion?
Questions?
Seeing the questions, call all the papers, say aye. That was the most curious man, so.
Just in defense of the planning commission, the drainage issue was addressed by them through the planning director's statement that before the matter proceeded, St. John's River Water Management District would have to approve a plan that provided that all storm water would retain on site. So, it isn't as though they ignored it in all fairness to them. Now, having said that, I will also state though that if that St. John's River Water Management District program to keep all storm water on site took up a significant portion of property with water retention areas, the plan that we're seeing up here might not be feasible. So, it, it would seem to be appropriate to know more about that.
And I don't think in any way we wanted to insinuate that the planning board just kind of ignored what was out there. We just think that the recommendations did, did kind of with more detail as to what it was. Moving the agenda. Item, I believe you. Item ten, request for, request for resolution number four. We've gone through item ten. So, we are, we are quickly closing. Administrator reports, Mr. Crowe. Mr. Yul. The motion was for everything.
I thought it, yes.
It was a motion.
They can't consider rezoning without the top plan, so it would have...
Just wanted to make sure that it kept the advertising line.
Just one quick, I want to tell everybody about the light beacon at the airport. Efforts to fix it to the heck not, hey, I'm sorry. Efforts to fix the light beacon at the airport in the most heck not way have failed. It's an old beacon and it would likely have to be replaced. And preliminary is about six thousand. The FDOT that may be able to split that with us.
You're kidding.
And if we can...
How much for that?
But they're all that work.
And, and there may be an opportunity for them to, one hundred percent, if we can have a little more time. But the airport advisory board is very concerned about the, their standard, this is an item of safety.
It's a hundred, like thirty seconds.
But the board asked me to bring that to you and let you know.
Captain.
They're not there thirty years.
Captain Luca, you have anything?
Just an announcement that we are, based on a meeting this afternoon, going to cancel the Palaca Pride cleanup for this Saturday, July fifteenth. We were scheduled to meet at the ballpark in Lemon Heights, but we're gonna cancel that. And the next Palaca Pride cleanup is August nineteenth at nine-thirty and we're meeting at the ballpark next to the armory at Mosley and Twig.
What's today?
Today.
With the next meeting? I'm sorry. August nineteenth.
I think I was at the seventeenth.
Yeah, we're in League of Cities. We can push it back. Have a good time.
Okay.
Push it back one week.
We can push it back.
Yeah, because we, we'll be at the League of Cities conference.
Because that's when we're doing the roof work and stuff at the...
At the field?
At the field, yes, sir. And we had already discussed the other thing that chief wanted me to bring up and that was the, the food donations, but that was brought up earlier in the meeting.
Thank you, sir. It's Robinson.
Can we hear that ring blowing in, Mr. Mayor?
We don't need to. We should wait for a second.
On July the twentieth, our financial literacy training will be happening for the employees of the city of Palaca, which is one of the suggestions from the commission as we were looking into the bi-weekly payroll. So, this will be one of the first trainings that we will have and it is open to the employee and their families. During that same time on July the twentieth, our interns will participate in an educational day for them. They'll also participate in the financial training. However, we'll have the associate provost from Bethelun Company University, Dr. Gail Gale, come in and speak with them. And we'll also have Director of Workforce and Placement Advancement from St. John's, Melissa O'Connell, will also be here to speak with the students on that day. After we do the financial training, Commissioner Campbell will get together with the youth and have a roundtable discussion as to how their time is going and how things are with them through this internship.
Thank you.
Matthew has already put up for us any event that we're doing online. So, while I'm here, I'm just gonna turn this over to Commissioner Campbell if that's okay.
And this would actually serve as my closing comments because I really, I really wasn't even gonna say anything tonight, but I feel that I was forced to do so. I forced you? Anyway, we've had the honor on yesterday to have a group of individuals come from Texas, Texas, Philadelphia, as well as some local, local students and interns from here in the city of Palaca. As you see, I'm gonna talk as a, I'm not gonna specifically speak to what you see slide by slide, but I'm just gonna give a general overview of what it was. We started very much early in the morning and ended somewhere in the evening. However, what it was overall was Mayor Hill and the previous pastor. Bob Brown. First preacher. There you have it. The kids were here. They were actually high schoolers. They were here and they served as, it was a mission trip. So, this, come to let you know that you don't have to go abroad to serve a mission. We have missions right here in our own backyard. So, we joined together with these individuals and we went and attacked the park out at, what's the name of it? Shaba. And Forster. And Forster. And we did painting and all of that good stuff. We did some work on the field with the clay and all of that. Overall, it was a very, very much exciting day for me to see over sixty youth come to the great city of Palaca. And I told them when we were in our little circle that you, your hands are the ones that helped create change with here in the city of Palaca. We, we, after we did the morning, we had a lunch together that the county commissioners joined for us and cooked for us and we were able to eat. As well, going back to some of the things that we did at the park, we were able to, with the great help of our HR director, get loads to donate some of the paint and some of the other things that we needed for that day. So, partnerships throughout the community and partnerships with individuals from outside of the community was the overall aim. And I think we did a great job at accomplishing that. From there, after we ate at C-Lo, we actually had a roundtable discussion. You probably saw it on the picture towards the end of the group of kids. Well, we talked about life in their respective cities. We talked about life in Philadelphia. We talked about life in Texas and we talked about life in Palaca. And the overwhelming response was we are all dealing with the same thing in Palaca, Texas and Philadelphia. And we talked about ways that as teenagers that we could, you know, get through those particular things. It was a wonderful discussion and we actually had some of the adults within that, within that forum talk about some of the experiences that they have growing up or what they see within the schools in their respective areas. From there, we went to the river center and they got to, I don't wanna say play.
From there, we went to the River Center, and they got to, I don't wanna say play, but they got the opportunity to learn what the River City, what the River Center had to offer. And we ended the evening with a tour of the St. John's. We kind of roped Mr. Carr, because he served as the volunteer at the River Center, but he actually started, Mayor Hill got him to come on and give us a bathroom trail, tutorial on the riverboat. Overall, like I said, the evening was very much one that I will forever hold in my heart, the conversations that I had one-on-one with the students from the other areas. It's my hope that we can one day return the favor to them and take a group of students from Palaca up to those respective areas and do some things within their community. We don't want this to be a one-time thing where they come and help us and we don't extend that hand to help them back. So overall, that's it in a nutshell. Thanks to Mayor Hill, thanks to our HR, thanks to all the city staff. As you can see, there is a picture, I do believe, of me and Mr. Jermaine carrying, so you can see who actually did all the work yesterday. You can see who actually did all the work. But, um, again, I am eternally grateful to even have had that opportunity. A lot of people know that youth, that's my passion, and to see that our youth are actively, being active within the community from the pictures. We had one of the interns that posted a Facebook post on yesterday, and from that, we had so many people inboxing me, asking, when, when is, when are things like this gonna happen again? How can their kids get, get involved? So hopefully in the future, we have these things for our children of our community to get involved in. As Ms. Robinson said, we are really gonna take what Ms. Mary has been, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor has been aiming for, and I'm gonna start that council, and the council is gonna start off with the individuals that we have serving of, serving as our interns as of now. So we will have a youth council for the City of Palaca.
The other thing I wanted to say is, you reminded that Holly will be here...
On Friday.
On Friday, and tomorrow at 3 o'clock. If you'll put some narrative or write down some stuff about that and give us those pictures, I, the man, I'm gonna meet with her. We're doing stuff for the insurance trust.
We got it on, we got it on the drive.
Okay, well, do that and, and the narrative with it and give it to them, because they, they highlight what students and stuff are doing, and as much as we can get in it, I might invite more people to come and see it. So make sure you, you did it for...
Yes. Just to add to that presentation, Bob Bronkman was the pastor of First Presbyterian. He eventually left and went over to Russia on a mission. And his heart never left Palaca. And, and one of the, and he's constantly communicated back and forth with the community as a whole, and he was looking for a way to break some kids down and really to give back to Palaca, identifying the communities as, as being much more well-to-do than we are from a financial standpoint. And a lot of these kids have never had an opportunity to interact with other folks from a diversity standpoint. And so the conversations were extremely enlightening for both, for both all who were involved and for the kids. But we also had 45 kids that came out from Camp Higher Ground, which is the past summer camp, and those kids came out and they worked side by side with these other teenagers as well. They're all high school kids for the most part. And it was really, it did us proud to see our local children be in those situations to give back to maybe the gang community service hour, but to also build relationships across the country. And that was what this was really about. They brought 33 kids in from Katy, Texas, and also from Lancaster, and the, and over in the Strasburg area. But it just created an opportunity for us to really work this entire thing. Sam Carr was phenomenal with his tour. Jim Roach, Jermaine Douglas over in Recreation, they worked to coordinate this thing along with Jonathan Griffith and Public Works. We had interns who were involved in the entire process. Larry Harvey from the commi, from the county commissioner's office, along with Buddy Goddard, did the cooking. They volunteered to come out, and they cooked for, not just for those 75 kids, but they cooked for 175 kids, including the younger kids at Camp Higher Ground. Betsy Driggers, Vicky, even the city manager went out and made a food run for us to get, to get all the stuff necessary for us to make this thing work. So it, it was a collaborative effort. Commissioner Bourne got a chance to come over and interact as well, but it's a collaborative effort, and it's the things necessary for us to move the community forward. And anytime that we can have folks coming to this community and feel as though they're a part of it and go back out and tell the story of Palaca, we had a chance to pass out literature as well, but it was just a great effort overall, and it was an opportunity for young people to give back to, to our programs. And so I, I was really excited about that. They finished the evening with the Vacation Bible School program over, Vacation Bible School program over at First Presbyterian. And so we were really excited about everything that took place. We got a chance to take the boat out, and they could see the St. John's, and that was really one of the better parts of what went on. So, you know, recreation's moving forward, and we are really excited about the transformation that took place at the parks on yesterday. Mr. Reynolds, you have anything else? Mr. Driggers?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Holmes?
Nothing.
Captain Forsythe? We got a special guest in here, and I wanna make sure, I'm gonna, you always come in, uh... You. Mr. Chairman, can you just come forward and say a couple words for us? We, we're always pleased to have you in here. This is probably his fourth meeting over the last year coming in, but we wanna make sure we recognize you, and can you bring his greetings?
Thank you, Mayor Hill, commissioners, always good to see you. I see you at a lot of places I go, as well as your city manager. Haven't seen your city attorney with you, but that's good.
Don't say that in a derogatory manner. If you don't have to have your attorney around, that means you're doing the right thing. It's nobody there defending. I'd like to bring you greetings from the great city of Crestview, Florida, which is in the Panhandle, where we are doing great things, and I, I'm glad I came, because I'm gonna go back and tell my council members some of the things that they're doing here in Palaca, which I think they're doing great, and I continue to hear great things about you. Talked with our former president, PC Wu, this morning. He told me, make sure I, I say hello to you. You know, he's back and forth. But I, I'm really pleased by what I'm hearing from, from the body here. Well, like you're looking out for the people, in my opinion, I've only been here just a little while. I'm not gonna take much of your time, because tomorrow I'll be in Orlando with legislative committee meeting, where we're still trying to strive to make sure Home Rule is taken care of, CRA is taken care of, and some other issues. So I sit on committee in one of those. Also, I'm on the nominating committee, which is gonna determine who your next second vice president, which you originally, originally, uh, eventually be your president. And only other thing I said, the Florida League of Cities is wait for that boat ride.
You didn't tell them you part of Palaca, you went to school here.
And you didn't tell them what your position was. I'm, I'm just a regular elected official.
He's a commissioner, but he, he went to St. John's.
I, I went to St. John's.
And he found a wife here.
And, um, this, Commissioner, class here, Ms. Brown, her nephew was my best man, so I know whether to beat up her or him. You're not touching her. Well, I, I sit on the board of directors for the Florida League of Cities with Mayor Brown, and the league does a lot for the cities. We're trying to wipe out the cities. There's a group of people in Tallahassee which are there, not in our best interest. So you need to make sure that you look out what's going on in Tallahassee for the early, first part of the year. They're gonna come back up with some of the things what they didn't get accomplished this year, to tear down your city and, and then have your citizens paying more tax money. So watch out for them. Continue to defend Home Rule. Thank you again for being here. Mr. Griffith, it's been a quiet evening for you. Have anything for us today, sir?
Justin, we're about to start four infrastructure projects, and should have more detailed construction schedules at the next meeting, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Campbell has used all of his time and made me use most of mine. Mr. Suggs, you have anything?
No, sir, I'll defer to the 27.
Vice Mayor Brown, it's 8:35.
I know, and I just wanna say, I want people to really understand that we just got a million dollars plus for our grant to help us with our wastewater. We wouldn't have gotten that, that if we had not been working here. The commission has been working, and our affluent has not been going into the St. John's River to pollute it. So we're ahead of the game with a lot of cities. A lot of cities are gonna be forced to do what we saw fit to do and, and are working to make it better. I would like surely to get that stuff about you there.
We got you.
That's it.
You sure?
Oh, I want to tell people, one more thing. The thing, as we see our city employees instead of fussing so much, say thank you, 'cause we got a terrific city, and they do a terrific job. That's it.
You sure?
Yep.
After 34 years, you can say what you want. Mr. Williams?
Not much, I just wanna commend you guys for all you have been doing. I missed out, I want to apologize for missing out on that event that took place.
It was hot.
Today, I know it. My phone just went out of commission, I am gonna leave my number so you can update my new phone, uh, number, that I missed that. And just thank everybody, our staff, for, you guys always helping me when I call or come down, you know, me being the freshman of the group, I'm still kinda way behind the era, so thank y'all for everything.
Take care. We're all fresh.
Not y'all. Not all.
You're on your second, you're on your sixth freshman, she's a nice tour.
What can I say? Well, I wish I could've stayed to the, well, with the students and on the recreation, on the visit here. I couldn't stay because I had conflicting appointments or what have you, so I did make a, I made a cameo, I made a cameo, so I did that and, and went back to what I was doing, so I didn't let people down that was already, already on my schedule. So, again, I wish I'd been able to stay a bit longer, but maybe next time. And that's all I have.
We're excited. The reserves are up. Budget is balanced, and August is approaching. And, and we're...